At the podium to our left and your right, but there being nobody in the council chambers as a citizen tonight, it looks as though we've satisfied this element. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend? Actually, I'd like to make a motion to amend. There was, looking at the July 19 minutes, language in item four. Looks like about the third line, it says Chair Nugent felt that it would be difficult to prioritize one population group over another, preferred to do the review by strategy rather than population group. I'd like to strike Chair Nugent and say the commission. Who's, all right, colleagues. Any objections? No objections, all right. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? There being none, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is Housing Strategy Plan. I invite to the presentation table the city staff and their consultants.
Good evening. Arthur Sullivan is here from Arch, as he will be throughout this process. Debbie Bent will be here in a minute. She's working on technical difficulties between the projector and the screen, but in the meantime, we'll work off of our paper copies and your agenda packets on your iPads. So, tonight, we are continuing the discussion of the Housing Strategy Plan, and in a minute, I'll turn it over to Arthur to begin the discussion of the second memo that was included in your packet. But I wanted to just briefly touch on the calendar information that was provided. So, that was in the first memo in your packet that you received, and the first attachment was the calendar that showed we anticipated working on this item until the beginning of October, then there'd be a gap while we were preparing the materials for presentation to the City Council. November 14 would be the City Council meeting, tentatively, where you would present your recommendations. And in the meantime, then, you would be turning your attention to the next item that was assigned to you on the docket, which is Review of the NB, or Neighborhood Business Zone. So, that is really all I have to say about that, unless you have questions or comments about the proposed calendar. And as you know, these are always in flux, just depending on how long things take.
My concern is that there is so much here, and as I go through the matrix that you prepared with all the policy proposals, I'm not sure that, how many meetings are we devoting to this?
Four.
Four.
Three beyond tonight.
Maybe we will, okay.
Right.
Maybe that's enough.
Right. One thing I want to remind the commission is that we are not doing these amendments. We are not actually going through the process of obtaining public input on the strategies or that kind of thing. Really, this is just an attempt to identify, and certainly, you need to understand all the possible strategies, but to identify them, then prioritize them, then for each of the strategies, if the City Council assigns it to the docket, if they agree with the prioritization, and then assign something to the docket, then a whole work plan would come forward in which you would decide, or you would make a recommendation on whether it was an appropriate strategy, what you would certainly want to obtain public input at that time. So, really, what you're doing is you're setting out the work plan and prioritizing it. These are some items that should be considered, these are the priorities that we see, but it is not the work plan. That's like years of effort to accomplish that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I think we're good on the calendar.
So, with that, unless Debbie, you wanted to make any comments, Arthur is ready to move ahead to his presentation on the materials in the second memo that was included in your packet.
No, I have nothing to add at this point.
Welcome.
So, I'm not sure how much I would call this a presentation versus facilitating conversation. We tried to provide you a number of tools to help the conversation tonight. I don't have any long presentation on items more, as much clarification of what we attempted to do for you, to sort of help frame the conversation and provide opportunities for you to then continue to provide input and stuff. So, we included, staff helped prepare three different main pieces that are included in the attachment. The first is the actual outline of a strategy matrix. Those were the first few pages. But then, the second attachment, which is, I actually want to really review that first, was a follow-up to the conversation related to the priorities from the conversation you had, and then, so, I actually wanted to talk about that more with you before we jump in and start going through the strategy matrix itself. And then, the third piece is, we included a number of articles, and then I know one of the commissioners had a couple of other articles that they sent out as well, so that was the third piece of information that we provided for you. So, anyway, so, the first step was, and that was just informational, you asked to have that, might refer to it from time to time during the course of the conversation tonight with you, and future meetings as we go forward. So, with that, I would suggest we go to the principles chart, and wanted to, what we attempted to do here is, there's sort of two parts to this, so we didn't, we kind of went through two exercises so that you could see sort of two ways of looking at potential principles for looking at strategies. The first is, we took the conversation the council had and the commission had, and you look like you're looking for the page, it's about page seven of the attachment.
Right. It's Attachment Two to the memo from staff and the Arch folks.
Is it the one, criteria slash principles?
Correct. Anybody having trouble finding that? It's not in that legal size paper, it's Attachment Two. By the way, the legal size paper that you have in front of you, that is Attachment One, only, all the, all of the fields are shown on it. The version in your packet cut off after a number of fields, and although those last remaining fields were blank, we wanted you to see what the whole thing looked like. So, it's very tiny, we'll try to improve that before next time, but that's what's in front of you on the legal size sheet.
So, does everyone have Attachment Two now? Okay, so...
I'm sorry, I don't, wouldn't able to make a link to you, to the server. Oh, thank you.
Do we need another copy? I think we have another copy.
Should we continue or wait till we have enough copies for everyone? Okay. So, as I was mentioning, the top half of the front page was our effort to summarize your comments, and also some from the council, and so we've listed those, but then the other exercise you asked us to do is to look at other documents that the city uses for purposes of visioning, or kind of looking at its future and things along those lines. So, the documents that we looked at include the 20-year vision, the council goals, the comprehensive plan, the budgeting results, work that the council used as their process for doing their budget, and then the economic development strategy. And I will note that the economic development strategy is from like 2009 or eight, so it's, of these documents, it's the oldest of them, but we still included that in our evaluation. And what we found when we were trying to do that is a whole lot of overlap and similarities. So, we, instead of us doing a filtering process, we thought, let's just organize the thoughts around what we thought were common themes, and so, and not try to boil it down to little short one or two sentences to kind of show all, but rather to show you the subtlety of the difference between some of the statements, so that you can judge for yourself how to interpret how in different documents, different ideas are presented. And so, you can see, what we tried to do is, for example, if you take the first one, create a vibrant and walkable downtown. You can see here, there's a statement essentially to that point, and all of the documents are reviewed. Now, the one document that had outlining and stuff, the economic development strategy, when you see a Roman numeral, that tells you what section it was in. Then, what we did, though, is we read through those documents, we found, well, what does that really mean? Are there things that give more insight to what that means? And so, you will see, density is high enough to support transit, sense of place, and identifiable. And those kinds, that language came from the 20-year vision and the comp plan, or the council goals. And then, integrate multifamily with commercial, civic, cultural, retail, and park spaces, that's how it's stated in the economic development strategy. So, this is just trying to show you our effort of taking statements and making it, at this point, trying to make things, rather than make them shorter, rather let you see the subtlety and have a little conversation with you to sort of filter through this in this sort of rougher form right now. We probably do need to boil it down, but I wanted to let you sort of lead that conversation on figuring out how to do that, or get your reaction to this, and see if this did help you kind of move forward along the lines of your conversation from last week. So, I'm not necessarily planning on walking through every one of these boxes. I would open it up to you at this point and see what your reaction is. Is it a reasonable summary? Is it helpful? Do you want to talk about any of these in particular? But at this point, that's what we're putting forward for you tonight.
Floor is open.
I think, I think the schedule we've created is good, and I think doing it as a summary is very good, because we need to know the nuances. And I think that if, we want to make sure it's coordinated with the rest of the city documents. So, if we decide we want to narrow it down, then we have to include that as part of our prospectus in our workload. But I thank you for the effort.
Go ahead, Deb.
Oh, just a quick one, I'm just going through here. Supports the character of single-family residential neighborhoods, I'm pretty sure that's in the comp plan. I don't have the comp plan in front of me, but I was pretty involved in it, so I think it was there somewhere.
And I think...
Is that in the vision statement?
There's something along those lines in the vision statement, it probably changed a little bit, Deborah, since the original one, but that same concept is in the...
There's a lot of policies that underlie that, so it's got to be probably in there somewhere.
Right.
Yeah.
I think we honed in more on the other documents, figuring the comp plan, probably had more of them, but yeah, we can double check that, because you're probably right.
Okay. Looks like there's no... Go ahead.
I have another little question. So, this is, we're talking about the housing element here, and I'm just, I'm not sure, will you kind of walk us through how these relate to housing, or was this just a compendium of various principles in planning, or?
I would say...
I'm just trying to make the leap there.
Okay, so, all right, we can explain what leaps we thought were in our mind, because yes, we were assuming some level of association to housing in your community when we did these. We didn't take every vision statement and stuff, we took the ones we thought had relevance. So, I think that we chose downtown because that's an area where so much of your housing growth is projected to be. So, we thought it was important to not only capture the housing elements of it, but what is it that makes it complete downtown? So, that's why we put in the first box. Offer diversity of housing types.
Clear, yeah.
That's a more clear one, okay. Provide expeditious, predictable, clear, and internally consistent regulations and processes. That's a general area in which, in fact, some of the articles that were sent to you sort of get at, there's a whole segment of the development community feels that that's one of the major effective ways to help deal with overall housing, and overall housing means, implies affordability. Let's see. Protect natural and environmentally sensitive areas, I think just because they're often where you're trying to do housing, you better keep that point in mind if you're going to be talking housing, don't forget that point. So, that, so there, it's not directly related to housing affordability, but it's such an important community value that as you're thinking about housing, you better, you know, don't forget that principle.
Okay.
Can I interject, please? If you don't mind, Deb?
I would say that does directly relate to housing, and we've seen in some of the research that land use restrictions restricts the amount of available land for housing. And I think that there's, these are both highly important priorities for our city and virtually every city, but there is a tension, I think, between the degree to which you set land aside and protect it, like sensitive areas, we have a lot of wetlands, we have a lot of steep slopes. You set that aside and you say it's off limits for housing, means you will have the effect of increasing the cost of housing because there's less supply, and there's constant demand, or rising demand, and that increases the price. And in fact, in some of the research that I looked at, in the articles I looked at, they talked about that. They talked about, in particular, San Francisco, having real challenges with its environmental policy and its housing policy, and one reason that prices are so much higher there than they are here.
So, and so, when we get to strategy, you actually see we have strategies, I try to get at that balance.
Yeah.
Right. And so, that's the question, is how much do you balance those, and you try to say, well, yes, there is an important environment, but I think one of our strategies is, we'll let you be creative on sites that have that, so that you don't lose density.
Yeah.
You allow flexible building types, et cetera, et cetera, so that you're not losing the count. So, that's an example of trying to balance that, that point.
And it seems like another thing that we need to balance is the fact that Kenmore is a pretty small city compared to someplace like Bellevue or Seattle. And a lot of what is driving the potential development out here is that there isn't affordable housing in those two big cities. So, we don't necessarily want to be the repository for all low-income housing, but I do see a balance for that. That's why, as we move along through these different priorities, one of the principles I think we need to retain is how much of the housing in Kenmore will be devoted to, say, affordable senior housing, or affordable first-time emerging out of the home needs, young family needs. But I think to get a handle on it, we have to start somewhere. But I would like to interject that, one of the principles that guides us is keeping in mind that we don't have to be responsible for all of King County here in this, you know, geographic place, to the detriment of what our own vision for the city is. So, I think it's good that we have a calendar, so we can kind of keep that in mind and move forward with some workable principles that can be flexible enough to accommodate maybe further research that the council does in the future, and public requests as they come forward in the public comments and any hearings.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Go ahead, Arthur.
Okay. Support efficient, well-planned infrastructure, focusing on transportation network and facilities that accommodate long-range growth needs. I think I sort of put this along the same lines as your downtown, is that housing and transportation systems, I think Commissioner Nugent brought that up before, just sort of that whole integration. Lot of work going on in sound transit right now, you may have heard of King County's trying to do a funding program, targeted TOD, so they do want to support housing that's more affordable, right near where the transits are and stuff, so I think that's where we sort of come, that's where this concept comes from. It can also be a way of, that's a way cities can also support affordable housing. In other words, often you ask the private development to take care of those needs, there are ways that the community can take care of that need, so that that develop, in exchange for that development having more affordability. So, those are a couple of different ways that you can look at the infrastructure issue. Any questions on that one? Encourage and facilitate a culture that values and supports a diverse population, inclusive, family-friendly, support safety, healthy, and welfare of all its citizens, so different people of different income levels in your community, so that's where the connection was there. Encourage volunteerism and public involvement, and work as a good partner with citizens and good government, so that was a combination of two things. One, it's a community effort, so think about using, working with the community. And then, the second is, as you do things, also be open and transparent and ask for community input. So, those seem to be pretty important values in different documents in your community, so that's where that one came from. And then, finally...
Can I? I'm sorry, Sarah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
How does that relate to affordable housing?
So, as you're, this is sort of their process of working on, not at this stage necessarily as much, but when you start going into the specific things that are your high priority strategies, what's your process for coming up for how you want to deal with them? And what we're saying here is, it seems very important to your community that that process involve community engagement, as you get to that point.
Does that change how we're going to review this?
No, because this is a work program we're basically doing now, not, so in other words, and I, just to sort of repeat what I said at the last meeting, let's say you put accessory dwelling units as a high priority strategy. That just says you want to do all the research on that because you think it has promise. You may get into that and decide you don't want to change a thing, but for right now, you're making it a high priority by saying, we think it's something we should look at really hard, given the different strategies out there, given what we know about our community, this we think is an important one to look at. That is not making any recommendation to what any changes should be at this time. It would be, then, when you do your work program, you'll undertake some of the high priorities, then you'll be getting into the real guts of, what exactly should we do? Is it community education outreach? Should we help people finance when they want to do ADUs? Do we change our regulations? Do we, you know, do other things like that? So...
Go ahead.
And then, the last one is, economic base that provides a range of goods and services, offers quality employment, and supports local businesses. And there it is, as you can see, helping to grow and retain independent community-scale retailers, specifically called out, support growth of health-related cluster, and office based employment. One of the things we are seeing in other cities is, when they survey local businesses, increasingly, they're saying recruitment and retention of employees is getting more and more challenging for them, and especially in the areas of retail and health industries. So, that's why we put that out there, is that linkage, that part of what you're doing with your housing is creating the environment for the companies that want to grow, they have, they can also have their employees have choices of where they, if they so choose to live in a community. So, that's what that item is regarding. Okay?
Thank you.
So, it sounds like at this point, the format's in right now, looks reasonable, and as we go forward, there might be more conversation, but for now, useful tool for you, and covered the bases as you were hoping it would. I mean, I don't know if we, you know some of your other vision statements, I don't know if there's other topic areas you didn't see in here that you were expecting to maybe see, so I, you know, but this is what we saw in thinking about it, if there's others. We always set up all these charts, you'll notice, that have blank lines at the bottom of everything implying, we don't know if we have figured out everything here, so...
All right.
Okay. All right, so, over to the strategy plan. So, just first wanted to, I did want to sort of do a little clarification of what we are trying to do here, format-wise. I know we went through this before, but I just wanted to repeat that a little bit for you, to make sure there's clarity on the format and organization of the document. We have attempted to infill, populate this with as much as we could think of. We may still be missing a few ideas and strategies, but last meeting, you had something where we were looking for things that we thought would focus on the needs of seniors. So, what we've done now, and you now have about a six-page document, is we've attempted to fully populate a range of strategies. Our sources for doing that include looking at other jurisdictions, not just in East King County, but in others who have done strategy plans, research reports that list strategies. I've probably referred to, not just for you, because a number of cities are doing this, I probably referred to about five or, two or three sort of research reports, and probably four or five major city reports from areas outside this region, and then looked at the Seattle report that was done a year ago, and then we've been doing similar plans like this for some cities in the past, those. So, it's sort of an attempt to look at that range of types of resources. But, again, as I noted, at the end of each section, we've left blank lines, because you may have ideas as well, we may come across some others as we go along, along that line. The next is that, as we discussed with you, we've listed the strategy in the far-left-hand column, the housing element policy or policies that that strategy reflects, whether or not it involves a code update, some other form of council action, or is more one where we're coordinating with regional bodies, or other bodies, or groups who are trying to do efforts where the city would be in a more supportive role. So, those are the columns that we came up with, if there's some other column you'd like to see as we go forward, we can add that. Then, we put down the type of income levels that might be impacted, or most likely to be impacted, by different strategies. Then, we did all the populations served. And then, you see blank sections or columns. Ultimately, the goal is to come up with some type of priority rating for all of these strategies. Usually, most cities have used a three-tier of some sort system. You could use more numbers if you want, or letters, or however you want to do it. And the purpose of the four or five columns to the left of that, or right of that, are to try to find, after we do some conversation, sort of, are there certain kinds of priorities here that make the most sense for us to populate these columns with, so that we can compare strategies to it? We didn't feel we wanted to jump into that quite yet, we wanted to see how your conversation was going, but the attempt is, this could be one column, five columns, however many, this is where we're trying to reflect some of the main principles, so that you can show that work when we're done, this sort of helps show why certain things might have gotten higher priority or lower priorities when we're done. So, that's one that I think, because we're sort of evolving this process, we didn't want to, we wanted to hear for night, so in a meeting or two, we'll actually take your comments and try to actually suggest what some of those columns might be. But the idea is that they'll build upon the principles, criteria sheet, that's what we're thinking at this point. And then, we always have another column. Yes?
So, I'm looking at the matrix, and I see the columns, but I think you're talking about a blank column somewhere where we fill it in based on our priorities.
It's the eight and a half.
Other council...
You need to turn to the eight and a half by 14 version, that was at your...
Oh.
Right.
This. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Okay. Just wanted to, okay, so now, so that's the format of the document. Then, the other formatting is trying, how do we group strategies? And so, we have created, I think, let's see, one, two, we have created four main sections. One is regulations. The second is, and those, it takes a couple pages on those, it's probably best if you use like the handout as we just referred to. Second is direct and indirect assistance, so that's where cities are using its resources. And you'll see a number of those are shaded, because those are more in the direct category, which the council said they wanted to be more lead on those conversations. The third is regional and statewide, so how do you plug into efforts that are broader? And then, the last category is sort of the monitoring oversight, what do we do over time, you know, where do we look and stuff over time? So, this becomes sort of a evolving document or evolving process that has a life of actions, or planning, actions, watch, reaction, and then go through a process four or five years down the road, see what the results of the efforts that you make, and then update this kind of strategy plan in the future. Okay, so that's, yes?
I just want to let you finish first, and then I'll propose something.
Okay. Well, that's sort of the four main sections, and then I was just going to point out... And then I was just going to point out, assuming that we would start at the top, and just point out that in the regulatory section, we thought there were three pretty significant subcategories.
And when I say finish, I meant before you got into the merits of, I meant, you're giving an overview, and now you're going to get into the merits of each proposal, right?
No, not yet. Like, one more minute.
I'm sorry.
And then, okay?
You just let me know. I don't want to.
So alls I'm trying to point out is, in the regulatory section, we thought that there were three very distinct areas, or three or four, I guess we had, yeah, three distinct areas that we grouped sub, we made subcategories. So the first are ones that may not on the surface feel like, it depends on who you talk to, how directly do they impact affordability? They're not explicitly affordable housing regulations, but they're things that deal with housing supply and diversity. So that's the first section. The second section is related, and, and just to repeat a comment I made several meetings ago, or when I worked with you on the housing element, is that, in my mind, this first section's a really important section, because the first thing you do is lay the groundwork of what the market can do, and our goal is to get, you know, in this country is, market creates our housing for the vast majority of what we do. We want the market to be able to meet as much of the need as absolutely possible, okay? So even though we're supposedly focusing on affordable housing, we think there's enough direct, you know, correlation between general housing supply and affordable housing that this merits conversation and discussion. The second section is when we get into regulations that deal with kind of more specific population needs specifically, seniors, people with disabilities and stuff. So that's what the second section is, is when you're dealing with special populations who typically have lower income, or often have a lower income as well. And then the third section are regulations that have a more direct impact on affordability. There's often a direct linkage between the regulation and some outcome related to afford, some level of affordability. So now I'm done with the overview of the organization.
Thanks.
Can you go back to that last section and describe it again?
So it's regulations that have a more direct correlation to creating housing that are either explicitly, or almost explicitly have some level of affordability, other than what the market might do on its own.
Okay, so it, in a way, it's, it's like creating that special niche that could be not provided for if market drives everything.
Well, and actually, often, these are trying to get the market to be the player, but you do it in a very explicit way that results in certain explicit price points. But you're still often relying on the private market to try to make these tools work.
Okay.
It's more the product that you're creating than it is who's doing it, because these are trying to assist both groups that work explicitly on affordable housing, but also to sort of create an environment where the market can sort of behave the way it normally does. But you translate some public action into value that, and you capture that in the product, and some of the product, and as a result of the action where you create value. So it's sort of, my old boss used to say, we used to do development, that when a city did a rezone, they were essentially ringing the cash register. But the company I worked for, in California, would say, tonight, though, council, it's going to be different with us. We're going to put that value you're creating through your public action back into some of the units being, meeting an explicit affordability level. And it's sort of the same with ADUs. You're saying to homeowners, hey, we're letting you do something a little bit different, and that product you're creating, we recognize, has some level of affordability that we otherwise would not typically see.
So I want to respond to that, and I'm glad Carol brought that up. You know, what are these different sections addressing specifically? And then I wanted to propose something. So my first thought is, I look at these three categories underneath the heading Regulatory Approaches. I look at number three as our primary responsibility with the tasks that the city council assigned to us. We're asked to propose market solutions for affordable housing. We got number three, affordable housing. And one and two are corollaries, I suppose, but to me at least, three is the biggest item in that, under these, under that heading. And it may not matter that we call it three, or one or two, but I'm just, for, for given what we've been asked to do, that looks like the most important of those three subcategories. And then moving on to what I thought might be a more efficient way to approach this, because we've got some very specific policy proposals going many pages into this. And last time we met, we talked a little about general policy perspectives, merits of general policy perspectives. And Commissioner Olson said, hey, can we see some articles recently produced about this issue? And he's right, that there are so many that are out there. And I thought, more, it might be more efficient if we did talk, step back, and still talk about some of those policies, now that we've seen some of those articles. And that might give us a more, a better sense of direction of where this commission wants to go when we get into these specific proposals. So I'm, I guess proposing we step back before we jump into this, and talk more about, now that we have a little more information about the merits of different policies, we talk about that and see where everybody sort of sits, how they feel, you know, what they don't know, what they do know, and what they want to know about the bigger picture. That's just mine. Go ahead, Mike.
I think you raise a good point. And in reading the articles that were provided, thank you, it helped remind me that affordable housing is not necessarily an issue constrained to those of low income. And I think that's an important point. And in our earlier meetings, that was one of the things I was trying to get to. Are we talking about how do we provide low-income housing? Or are we talking about how do we provide affordable housing for a broad range of income groups? I think we're looking for the broader range, but I wanted to get a sense of what we think the city council's looking for, and what the rest of the commission thinks we really are direction ought to be.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Carol.
Well, I don't know if I have an answer to that, but I, it's the same, initially, when we were taking on this affordable housing, one of the areas they wanted us to really hone in on was senior housing. And it, and that is a really good niche to talk about what you're talking about, because seniors may not necessarily have low incomes, they might still, but they're, they have fixed incomes. And in the climate that we're in here in Puget Sound, a fixed income is a scary thing when you talk about housing, and especially when you talk about transitional housing, which is what seniors are doing. They might stay in their home for a while, but then they're going to downsize, and then their needs change again. And can they navigate through those transitions if there aren't resources for them to do it? So affordable needs to be defined, I think, which is what you're trying to do.
So is there, go ahead, Dennis.
I'm with you on those last comments. And it raises another issue for strategy for me, which is, I am wondering if we should spend a little time anyway, looking at the single-family housing concept. Because before we had some of these issues, you had more open housing available, and there weren't quite the number of people without housing or having the problems. And I'm just trying to figure out, can we broaden the single-family approach without damaging, you know, the livability for the people that, that like the single family? And I don't know quite where we are in terms of the definitions that we have in the land use code, but how do we deal with unrelated people that may be coming to a house to help an elderly person? Either to physically assist them, or maybe to help pay the costs of, of living there and keeping it up? You know, there are a number of homes that may be larger, and they may want to stay in place, but they can't afford to stay there, because they're on the fixed income. And I, I just think that should be part of our analysis, because I also think that if we can create something there, we may provide a lot of affordable housing, but it'd be unique. It wouldn't be, you know, quite as fixed in concept. Anyway, that was my thought.
Thanks, Dennis. Anybody else? Yeah, Mark, please.
Yeah, I, I like what Mike Benelain mentioned about trying to serve a, you know, sort of a broader, I guess a broader approach. But I'm wondering if it, you know, I'm reading the first principle here, it says emphasizing those with the greatest housing cost burden, which I think implies, you know, serving the very low and low income. And I also just, as a sort of an aside, I noticed that the regulatory approaches, very few of them actually address the very low and low income, you know, populations. I guess we can further discuss, you know, when you're going over the specifics, how they, how they might. So I think it's important, yeah, to get clarity on our, our big-picture approach. Are we trying to serve everybody, or are we trying to serve more specific populations or some combination? So I agree, I think that's a good, a good prerequisite to getting into more of the specific strategies.
So it sounds like there's general agreement, then, that we should look at the big picture first, and there's some segments of the big picture that people want to talk about. So, go ahead, Deborah.
Well, I just wanted to say that the whole, that the reason that the table is set out like it is, is to show that these strategies, you know, address a broad range of income and a broad range of populations served. And so what you're trying to do is figure out that not every strategy is going to hit each one, but what you want to end up with, the end product is likely, you're going to say, you have a strategy that at some point touches all these areas. I think that's what you're trying to get to. So I don't think there's going to be a particular focus on, let's try and solve the needs for seniors or for one particular population. It's looking at this, that there are strategies in there that would help a broad range of income and a broad range of populations. That's where you're trying to get to.
Right. And, and just to add to that, I mean, I think I would not, I agree with Debbie that what we're trying, you know, you make the point about, there are different needs. We've identified all these different kinds of needs out there, and it isn't just very low income. It's moderate income. It's first-time buyers. So there are sort of two ways of thinking about your strategies and how they all add up, and that's why I think we have the two sections we have. One is income, and the other is different types of household types. Because if you did something, and you, like you said, the council did say seniors, well, if we don't have any that seem like they might help seniors, have we done, have you done a good job? And so that's where I agree with you. You need to decide what your big picture looks like. I think your housing element says, implies, there are different needs. And the question becomes, as you score this altogether, getting comfortable, understanding the strategies, how, where might they hit, so that you understand that, and then decide what the balance is. Because you can't do everything, right? You can't do everything. Maybe over 15 years you can, but this is the next three to five years, which is also why we say, don't take things off the list, but rather make it a low priority, so that in a future generation, we can all look at them again and say, well, we didn't choose that before, maybe there's a reason why. Then there's one other thing I also forgot, no, I'll say that for later, given where you're at now. That's, that would not be the right kind of, I'll save that point for later.
Thanks. Go ahead, Deborah.
One thing that might be helpful, and I believe we did talk about this before, is maybe, and maybe this is one of the blank columns, but we, we did talk about the volume of units, that, I know we went back and forth on that, that each of these strategies, so that could, that could be one of the things we discuss. But I think, you know, per this conversation we're having, it would be useful to know how much need proportionally we have between very low, low, moderate, and market. If we're already, and I think, I don't know if there's a way to kind of marry what we saw earlier with this on this table, so that we could kind of have it in our head. Maybe we have, for example, I'm just making this up, you know, only need for 5% improvement on the moderate, but we have a need for, you know, 40% improvement on the very low income. I, you know, it would help us, I think, prioritize. Does that make any sense?
Okay, so you have that, but it's buried in lots of stuff, so.
Right, so kind of bringing that.
This, I'm starting these as what are going to be in the end, five or six graphics we bring back, so that, you know, so I'm making note of that one, and hopefully we don't end up with a list of 30 again, because then you'll have so much you can't filter through it. So part of it will be from your comments, it'll help us to know which pieces of data to help when we try to go the next step. So I'm making a note of what you just said.
Well, and similarly, the population, although, I guess affordable, I'm struggling with, why would something that's affordable look different for workforce versus young adults, for example, versus families with kids? I mean, is the, right, so I don't know.
And some of those, sometimes those will blur more, but.
Yeah.
Young families, I think, is sort of implying, do you have any ownership stuff going on? So that they can, if a young family wants to settle it down.
Okay.
My wife's a schoolteacher in the east, in East King County, and one of the biggest things I've watched for her teaching there for 15 years, is the new young, bright students, teachers come in and work for three years, and when they're ready to buy, they move. And we treat, and then we train the next generation of nice, bright, young teachers. But when they're ready to get married and buy a house, at the end of every school year, they lose three or four teachers, because they decided to move where they could buy a home and teach closer where they are. So that's an example of, you know, where that might play itself out. So that's why young families, I think that sort of is an implied ownership kind of piece. I think the young, the reason we say young workers is because maybe they can get by in a really small unit, and so if you encourage, Redmond and Kirkland now have a private developer who builds tiny units that are affordable at 50, 60% of median. They're tiny, but he doesn't get a dime of subsidy, and they're full. He keeps finding, looking for more and more sites, because he fills them. The market is responding to it. There's a demand for it. So that's sort of, and, and most of those are young individuals. So that's, I think, you know, sort of an example of where, why having populations won't always be clean, but it might help at sometimes.
I liked that you.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Sorry.
We're going to go with Mike, and then you get to go.
I have an initial comment, but before I get to that one, I just want to respond to the, we've had the discussion about tiny homes and apotements, and already, and we made some decisions about that. What, and as I recall, the basis for that decision was, yes, there seems to be a lot of development in that right now, particularly in the inner city. But when we looked at the economic data that was provided to us, what we're seeing is that this is a wave that's going to go in the other direction very soon, just as you mentioned. In three or four years, those folks who are living by themselves in those apotements are going to want to form families, and they're going to be looking for single-family neighborhoods where they can afford a house and move into. So myself, I'm kind of looking at maybe Redmond, where you have a constant refresh of people coming in to work at Amazon, other places, if that's going to happen. I don't see that as a situation that Kenmore's going to face any time in the future. So I just wanted to say that. What I really wanted to get to is getting back to, I also, somebody who worked better with numbers and having an idea of where we are, some kind of mark in, in the sand, so we can kind of judge and understand what the impact of the decisions we might be making are. As part of the regional business plan, we've already developed an awful lot of mixed-use and multifamily, and addressed a lot of density issues, specifically with the idea of being able to create affordable housing. So I kind of like to have an idea of where we are right now, so we can understand, just like Deborah was talking about, is where, where does the movement need to be? And certainly, we've already talked about in a number of the strategies in here, a focus on those areas of the place where you would make adjustments to increase the density to create affordable housing at various income levels. But having an idea of where we are, what's the capacity out there, some sense of where we think those are likely to develop at, that, that would be useful to me.
I, I need a little more clarif, I think I know what you're saying, but I want to make sure. Are you implying where are we at in terms of, like, the town center and the overlays that have been approved, or is it something more than that?
It's more than that.
Okay.
It's part of the regional business and some other work that we did. We've created zoning that has built into it both mixed-use and multifamily, and associated with that are density assumptions.
And density incentives.
And then the density incentives.
Right.
So what I would love to have is something that says, okay, if we have this out there right now, is, is something that we can develop. Two, what, what would that look like if it was fully developed? So we can understand where the gap is and where we might need to make adjustments in the future. Without that, I'm not sure that we wouldn't just be either crossing up ourselves in the decisions we already made, or just duplicating the effort that we've already done.
Plus, we don't want to make recommendations that create a market niche that there's a shift in, and, you know, like the Spencer 68, is it completely filled?
Yes.
And the new phases that are coming, as they complete them, they are completely filled. So, you know, if there's success in that particular type of development, and there's a way to measure that, it would be nice. a way to measure that, it would be nice for us to say, you know, this part of our income strategy is being met well in the marketplace here, so we could move that direction with another part of the, it is a big topic. You're doing an awesome job of helping us break down and try to think about the principles that really are going to shape our recommendations, but then get a grip on, you know, what are the regulations and how do they impact this? Because it's hard to get your hands around everything.
So, to, I think, your point, both of your points, you have created, we're not starting from square zero by any means, and I think a lot of people think you are, at times, like, oh, we're going to do a strategy plan, like, well, you've been working on a comprehensive plan and housing element, you did have an affordability requirement there, you have been supporting creation of affordable housing, it's an ongoing building process, so you're not starting at square zero, and that's what I think you're sort of getting at. The other, though, is, and the sands keep shifting from a demand point of view, and I'm going to tell you, you can't predict them. I'm sorry, I've been doing this for 35 years, and what's going on now would not have been predicted by anybody 10 years ago.
Yeah.
And what's going to happen 10, we have some ballpark ideas, but we don't know. So much is driven by economics, so much is driven by lots of other things. Demand comes from employment growth, you have it, you don't have it, you know? Who was here in the mid-'70s, early-'70s? Housing was a lot more affordable for about five years there, when I first moved here. So, there's a lot of dynamics going on, but I think what our data is sort of showing you is, there's some basic trends that have been pretty consistent throughout. So, one, we need to build upon and not undo, but what you can do, and so you'll notice that some of the language for some of the things we put down there is evaluate. In other words, if something is a really important component, then maybe you want to make that a higher or medium priority by saying, we want to watch that one really carefully to make sure the vision is happening, because that element is really important. So as an example, in Overlake and Redmond, there they have a large mixed-use area that they, they have, all of Overlake and Redmond is mixed-use. You can build housing right next to the Microsoft campus, just good luck figuring out the economics to make it happen. But they had a plan to have 1,000 housing units in Overlake, and there was, like, 50 when they did that plan. But they needed that housing, they understood, they need that housing for that economic growth to occur. So they finally decided that what they were going to do is take one specific area of Overlake and say, this could make a nice mixed-use residential neighborhood within this larger neighborhood. But they still allowed mixed-use. So then they wrote, they wrote some policies to give housing a leg up on commercial, in that very small sub-area of that larger plan, and they also said things like, no big-box retail, because Sears is right in that neighborhood they're talking about, and if on the street where they were planning it, another big-box retail came in, it would completely undermine any long-term 30-year plan to get the mixed-use housing, ground-floor commercial, that they thought would be a good mix to have. And I worked on that plan 15 years ago. You are now finally seeing it come to fruition. But the rules were in place there, to, how do you make the vision, or how do you ooch the vision that isn't there today? What can you, as government, do to help the private market move in that direction that you like, you know, will it be there, or will it, when it's ready? It might be 10 years down the road. So that's where this gets hard, is market conditions have to be right. Another story I can give you, on like, the affordability front, is I worked on Redmond, I've worked on all the master plan communities done in East King County. Issaquah Highlands, we wrote the plan for that in 1995. Yet you didn't see some of the development until 20 years later. In fact, it's still ongoing. Why? Because when the market softens, they don't lower the land price and let someone build a lower-priced product, they sit on the land and wait till the next building boom, so the person who's going to build high-end will come in and pay a higher price for the land. You can't control when a landowner decides, will they make a piece of land available or not? You don't control, you create a capacity, but you don't control the individual transactions that occur. So these are all complicating factors, but within that crazy world of housing development, you still, as government, can do things to entice, or ooch, and things like that. So, we're not starting at ground zero, so we have to respect that. And so you may say, part of your strategy is what things are most important, and so watching those could be just as important as doing something new.
Go ahead.
This is just anecdotal, but recently, in the last week, a housing development that was for low-income housing had been purchased by a developer in Bellevue, just maybe four blocks from Bell Square. And the city went back to that developer and asked him not to build the townhomes that would be private dwellings, and negotiated with that developer so that they could retain that low-income housing that close to the city center. Which, when you think about Bellevue 20 years ago, that wasn't, you know, that wasn't right in downtown, it was kind of a ways away, but the developments that have gone around this little low-income housing have just swallowed it up, and, you know, they're multimillion-dollar townhomes.
So here's the scarier part of that story.
Yeah, tell me.
It's not four blocks from downtown.
It's not.
It's near Crossroads, which has always been the more affordable part of town, and we're seeing that happen there.
Okay.
Which makes it even scarier.
Okay.
I know personally what's going on there.
Okay.
But that's, your story is well-made, but what I'm emphasizing is, it doesn't take a high-rise downtown to have that impact. We're seeing that impact in broader areas than just those in the immediate proximity of the high, of the highest-density areas, of towns like Bellevue now. That's really, that's a mind shift. And the other thing that's really scary, we, different, I shouldn't say scary, different about that story? Normally, the story would be tearing down 75 units to build 300. They're tearing down 75 to build 85.
Yeah.
I've been doing this for 25 years in East King County, and I've never come across that story. So that, that is a, we're hearing different kinds of stories, and we don't know if they're short-term, in fact, I brought, there is one chart I did update, and it's too bad we don't have the computer working for you. Because I think it ties to a lot of the articles we've seen, and I don't know if you guys can see this, I'll pass it, pass it down, but this is the one where we showed rents relative to median income. I did Kenmore's, I did, I added Kenmore's to the bar, and I added this year's data. I'll try to describe it if you look at it and pass it down. There's two important things to look at in that chart. The first is, it goes like this usually, okay? Markets get strong, they build a lot, either the economy gets weak, or they overbuild, and rents sort of stabilize themselves. And so you have, here's affordable at 60, and here's affordable at 80, and it kind of moves like this, within that range, forever. The last four or five years, we've had a steeper curve than I've seen in a long time, and it's been a longer sustained upward trend to now, we've hit, remember, I showed you this data with a year-ago data, and we had just hit 80% of median, for, in East King County as a whole, and King County, I think, even as a whole. We're now shooting way above, and you guys are almost at 80% of median for your average rents. Now, either we're in for a really, really big correction, or we're getting to be a market condition that's a little different than I've seen for the last, you know, the first 20 years I was here. Still not as bad as California, much worse in California, but that's kind of an under, you know, undercurrent that's going on out there, even with all the construction that's occurring. So that's, I think, puts even more pressure to help the market build. That's one of the best solutions, to trying to deal with a big, you know, that graph is supply as a whole, kind of thing.
So is one of the, can I ask a question? Is one of the factors that's driving that affordability definition that we're trying to grapple with, just that there isn't enough supply, and because of that, people that have existing buildings can charge more money? I mean, even our reasonably rented little apartments here in Kenmore, that all the high schoolers move out to when they're finally ready to do that, they can't do that. They're too expensive. And the people that live there are finding that, when they, you know, are coming up for a lease renewal, their leases are going up, like, huge.
So...
So, can you, is it because...
That's part of it, that is definitely, I think that's definitely part of it, I don't think it's the whole story, because 20 years ago, we still had cost burden households. We still had people paying a high proportion, we still had average rents that were relatively high, affordable to your workforce. You've always had that to somewhat significant levels, and now it's getting to the point that when that story came up, that council said, forget all the process, we're saving the building.
They bought it.
Hmm?
They bought it.
I bought buildings 20 years ago.
No, I'm just saying, saying, oh, they stepped in and talked to the developer into making a deal, they bought it from the developer.
Right.
That was their solution.
Right.
We don't have that kind of resources, but that's a great story.
Well, actually...
It mustn't be it's bad, I'm just saying.
We bought about 10 acres here 18 years ago, so I mean, we do.
You do have the resources, because the resources that will be used, you don't have enough to do it for every building, but you have been doing it, it's been a member of ours. The Arch Trust Fund has funded, it's going to be funding that property. They're not, they're, that was the idea behind the trust fund.
I was talking about that property. How much did it cost, Arthur?
I believe it'll be close to 18 million.
Right. That's a little more than we paid for that parcel across the street, that's my point.
But the point, the idea behind the Arch Trust Fund is, the cities with other public support will be helping that development, just like the other 3,000 units you saw on the list. The city's never put up all the money, they've used their resources so that they can do projects like, the opportunity to do that kind of project, if that had been in your town, potentially, you know, it could happen in your town, too, with the cities all helping out.
Okay, and go ahead, Lori.
I was just going to mention, Mike, you'd raised the question about the data, and where's our capacity, and what, and that kind of thing. And I want to reiterate that both the East King County housing analysis, but more significantly, the Kenmore housing element, has a wealth of data in it. And so, it's a lot to read through, it's a lot to wrap your head around, but I'm wondering if taking a second read with sort of the table in hand, might help you refresh some of the issues for that table? You know, what is affordable housing? What are the city's commitments? What's the city's capacity? That, that kind of thing. Certainly, we can do it on this end, but we've done it several times in several different ways, and I'm afraid that it's just going to require a concentrated analysis of that information, and then coming back to us with specific questions, if you don't understand the data, or there's something we can do that would help with that. But I truly believe we've provided most of that background information.
Well, what I think Mike was getting at, and others have addressed, is, we've seen this data, I haven't memorized it, I suspect nobody else has, it's hard to know exactly where our strengths and weaknesses are, in terms of affordable housing. So I think that's what Mike's getting at, you know, where's our need in this city? How many people are affected by this? It's very easy to say, oh, at the lowest-income level, they have the most need. Well, of course, by definition, it's affordable housing. What kind of resources or changes do we want to make in policy to help how many families at that level? And if it's not that many, I think we have to also consider the probably far more many, far more numerous families, numbers of families, that are struggling to afford housing, that aren't very low-income, but they can't still, like you were saying, fresh out of school and that kind of thing, they, they're not impoverished, but they, they're living a normal, you know, middle-class life, and they can't afford it. And I think that should be, we're probably talking about far more people in that segment of the market.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So the question is, how do you open your policy to address the need?
So, I'm not disagreeing with all these comments, but we're going in a circle to some extent, and I'm going to suggest, we go back, this is a good conversation, these are helpful, because it's, one, I think, remind you, go back and read, but we'll also go back and take these comments and try to help sort through the data for you, to help give some context. I have done that, that's all I ever do. I think I'm going to tell you, is there's going to be lots of different needs out there, more than you can probably address. But you're, I'm also hearing, and this is one reason we started going to the populations, which we hadn't done so much in the past, is every time you guys start talking, you start talking about people who want to be able to buy a home, or, you know, it's more than just about an income as part of the story, and trying to sort through where your priorities are. But I would maybe suggest, we go through the regulation ones, you know, talk about this maybe a little bit more, put some time on it, but spend time to just go through these strategies, so make sure we're at least explaining them to you, and asking questions, and see what questions you have about them as well. We're not trying to get anywhere the first two nights, we're trying to get through these strategies so you understand them. And so, to just talk broadly about needs and not talk about strategies, too, I think will make it harder for us to sort of proceed. So I would suggest, find some certain amount of time, just sort of this conversation, but I think it would be helpful to go through, because we're not trying to get you to prioritize now, we're just trying to walk through them to make sure you understand them.
So, I'm okay with that, but to get ready for that later conversation. Lori, if you could send me the references, I agree with you, I do recall there's a wealth of data out there.
Right.
I would like to go through it, and then maybe on my own, go through and say, okay, this looks like it would provide housing for this income group, or for this specific special needs, and then give that back to you and say, okay.
Right.
I still would like to get a sense of where our real gap is here.
So, the July 19th packet included the housing element and the East King County housing analysis, and in the housing comprehensive plan, the housing element, on page 5-4, is table, a table that talks about households by income category. That's about as distilled as I can give you at the moment.
What was that table number again?
H-A, it's on housing element, page 5-4, and that says that 20% of households in Kenmore fall within the standards defined as very low or low income. So 11% are less than 30% of median, 9% are 30 to 50% of median, 15% are 50 to 80% of median, and 65% a large amount are greater than 80% of median. But that shows you what the breakout is of, that was in 2011, that's that data from there. So, I don't think 20% is an insignificant number of Kenmore residents. So, again, I think if we go back to this information, and it, again, was all included in the July 19th packet, if you want to read through it as you're thinking, I wasn't expecting you to memorize it or anything like that, but just maybe pick out the key points that you would use to frame your thoughts about this table that has been presented.
Yes, that would be useful. What I would also like to have, and what I, guess what I was primarily wanting to look at, is to be able to go back to the decisions we made about particularly the regional business zones, and what the decisions we made in terms of density, and what we thought the capacity would be for new building there.
Right.
And that's where I'd like to go through and say, okay, with this density level, ideally, somebody would tell me this, would say, okay, that's going to attract housing that's going to be affordable for this income level. I don't expect you're going to have that, but I think a reasonable person can go through there and say, well, at this density level, this is going to be high, medium, or low income, what's going to be affordable to high, medium, low income? And at least for myself, that would give me a sense of, what have we addressed already?
Yeah.
And where would we have to have something else to...
The capacity information is on 5-10, that talks about existing housing units and capacity, and that was done and incorporated the changes that you made for the regional business zone, it doesn't break it out by income level, so that's something we could think about.
And I think, let me see if I understand what you're saying. Let's take the different zones in the community, we know what the remaining capacity is, and then looking at what the market is building today in those zones, what will the price points be, all things just being what they are? We have 300 housing, single-family homes, and they're being built for $700,000 a unit, the more recent ones, and in this zone, they're building multifamily across the street, and those are coming in, and that's a... The more recent ones, and in this zone, they're building multifamily across the street, and those are coming in, and that's affordable to 100% of median. It's, that's what it sounds like, something that simple, you know, that rough or that approximate, would that be, get at what you're kind of trying to understand?
It would, it would. I think the regulation we have in place right now has calibrated a future distribution or portfolio of housing out there. Whether it happens in a year or 20 years, that's what we've laid out there. So it would have, it would be nice to know what that really looks like in terms of affordable housing at different income levels. That, that would give me something I could look at and say, okay, that would need, let me take a look at this list again and see.
And this is, right. And, and we can do that. This is where the crystal ball becomes like really hard. Is right now, you sit down with any economist, say, you're not gonna get any condos in your town center. No one's building condos now. And there's some technical reasons as well as there are economic reasons. In fact, the tech.
Legal.
That's what I mean by, right, technical, legal issues. And so that's keeping people away. But everything is saying, everything is saying they should be being built. And if that ever gets fixed, and I, I just made a bet with somebody the other day. I said, within five years, an economist who was helping a city saying, we don't even study that. And I said, no, it'll change. There'll be so much pressure and demand on it. At some point, there will be a reaction. So.
That's exactly what this would be useful for. Because if we look at this and say, we're calibrated right now, it doesn't include having condos in there. But looking at in the future, a person said, we ought to.
Right, and that may help you influence, hey, we should be getting on board with the state legislation to fix this legal issue that's keeping the private sector from dealing. Because that seems like that's how we're gonna start the ownership ladder happening on the east side. We need that. And, and that, so, kind of thing. So that's, so we can try to take a stab, and it's not gonna be really fine-grained. But if we can look at where your capacity is and, and sort of do that kind of quick look at.
That would be great. I'm sure the, the city budget can't afford a rocket science analysis here. But I think, you know, something that's fairly fine-grained, but has, you know, some distinguishing to it.
Okay, well, we'll take a stab at some, because, I mean, you're, you're going along in a conversation other cities are struggling with too. And, and we're trying to figure out how to help you guys have these conversations. And your idea is something we've heard in another city too, so it seems worth the effort to see if we can figure out how to do that.
I want to be careful here. I'm not giving direction here. What does the rest of the commissioners feel about this before we?
Totally.
I agree, and go ahead, Deborah.
Oh, I was just saying, so that's the numerator. That's like the capacity that we expect to build out at the various levels. And, and the denominator would be, well, what's the need? So, or the ratio, or however you want to think about it. I mean, to me, if you're just saying, well, we're gonna build out 100 units of X income level, well, if we need 500, that's different than if we need 80.
Right.
So, yeah.
I think, I think we, those numbers are already in the materials we have for you. It's a matter of reorganizing them some.
Okay, cool.
I, I might also mention that the TOD information was not incorporated in these numbers. So that's an important point that needs to be looked at in the TOD area, where, where there actually is an inclusionary housing requirement, potentially.
Yeah, and thanks again, Mike, for bringing that up. And I just want to point out, I see a connection between what you, Arthur, were saying about how housing develops and how policies turn into reality and how long that takes. And what Mike is saying about the seeds we've already planted and the city council has adopted for doing that. And when I saw this project, I kind of felt like you're acting as if this is something we haven't addressed. And in fact, we have and did thoroughly in the RB rezone, and we haven't even fulfilled what we've already zoned for in the RB rezone. I think about, in particular, Juanita Bay. You're probably familiar with it. But my understanding is that the zoning for all the new construction and the mixed use and the changes that have happened down in Juanita Bay, I don't know if you guys have been down there. But if you had, it's dense, it's vibrant, it's connected to a waterfront, it's connected to a park. It could be, I've brought this up before, before when we were talking about the Pro's Plan, how that could be a model for Kenmore by combining a recreational asset with a city and kind of an urban walkability, livability setting. So that only took, what, 20-plus years to materialize from the time it was zoned to the time it happened? For all we know, and I think this is part of Mike's point, we may have a perfectly good zoning policy in place right now, but it's just gonna take 20 years for it to materialize.
And that's.
Probably when the waterfront comes, becomes a recreational or commercial and mixed-use destination.
And the question that is the opportunity in front of you now, and that's, I'll use your example. The city didn't explicitly, for all that zone change, ask for affordability. And in other neighborhoods, the cities did say, we want affordability for those changes. And because, and so that's part of the question in front of you is, that's why I'm saying it may be review. You've done that with your overlay zone here. You have an affordability component. You have other areas that may or may not have, you know. So that's when you, this gets to the request of understanding the match. And I think it gets to your articles, is that action ultimately did create a lot of value that allowed these developments to occur. And cities that have asked for affordability have had results in very similar timeframes as those that didn't when they took those actions. And Kirkland, if they had done that four or five years later, there would have been an affordability component. So some of that housing would have been priced at points that would have worked, that aren't being made available in their community.
So, you know, I, I hear you talking about affordability, and I think what you're getting at is something that's outside the scope of what we were assigned because that's a direct or indirect subsidy from the city, I think.
No, that's in the land use section. That's just like what the count, what this commission did a number of years ago when they up, when you did the overlay zone. It's what was done with the site across the street.
Okay.
That's a regulatory tool.
Is that part of inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing?
Some people refer to it that way.
Like the California Legislative Analyst Office? That's the report that I sent out to people on the, on for tonight's meeting. And I don't know if anybody read that. But, you know, I'm hearing so much of this conversation that relates to and seems to not respond to what the analysis in that report had. And it was an analysis that was corroborated by other independent sources. So I'd really like, before we plunge into the details of the specific policy proposals, is to look at that analysis. I mean, we had a handful of articles, and they were somewhat helpful. I've looked at it. I've seen some of them. But it basically told us, I think, what we already knew. Housing's expensive. A lot of people can't afford it.
Right.
People are distressed when they can't afford good housing. The government steps in and pays for it to some extent. And they do it with vouchers, and they do it with subsidies, and they do it with this, and they do it with that. And when I was trying to draw a line between what we were assigned to do, which was to provide market incentives for more affordable housing, and what the government can do directly or indirectly with its resources, that's why I brought, that's why I questioned, okay, are we talking inclusionary housing? Is that really part of our, our scope of assignment here? And maybe it is, but I, I really want to talk about the analysis that I saw in that report, and it's been repeated elsewhere. Because you talk about inclusionary housing like that's the primary goal, like Juanita Bay and Kirkland should have focused on affordable housing components when inclusionary housing is part of that plan, and it would have helped. But I look at this analysis, and I think the primary market influence on affordable housing is to encourage and make it easy for more housing to be built even if it's not affordable. The overriding point of that analysis, and I'd be happy to get into details as to why, from what I read on this, is that all new housing helps affordability for a couple of reasons. I don't know if you've read it, but.
Not only did I read it.
Really familiar with it.
I'm very familiar with it. And I then went to their source and asked them what their thought was on the report. And they sent me another report that was written three months later, which did not refute what they said, that market is part of the solution, an important part. But that the conclusions that were derived in that report were not what they were trying to completely say. And that's from UC Berkeley, which was their source. So I have another article that was published, because there's usually two sides to stories, and I've heard these, and I worked in California for a long time. And it's, it's an ongoing debate, and I think that's why we're, I'm not, I think Juanita Bay is great, increased supply. I get that. The point that we're making is, can you, as a result of that process, are you creating benefits that when you are doing something like that? I'm not saying inclusionary. Inclusionary is used as a term that means everywhere in a city. And I had to write an inclusionary program in Bellevue when I first came because council wanted it. This is saying, when you do a rezone, do you link some affordability based on the value that you're creating through the change in the zoning? And so you're not undermining any of the overall economics of projects. But it's a complete, you know, it's not going against the points you're making and those articles make about overall supply. But that study also said trickle-down does not really work in many market areas. And it can, you know, and I can send the other report out that said.
Well, this study didn't say that, but if you want to send me the other report, maybe it did.
Right. So I'm just letting you know that there's two, there's, there's a robust debate going on. And I think what that implies is there's truth to all of those points that are being raised out there. And what we're seeing is what is happening in our market area? And what are we doing to try to, when we can? Because I would say that the land use incentive program is not a subsidy program. And it is taking the value created by public action, and instead of putting it in the economics of a piece of land, it's putting it into the economics of an overall development.
I don't even know what that means. But what I can say is that if you're gonna overlay something to require affordable housing on a piece of, of an area or a zone in the city, you've changed, you've radically changed the economics of the current landowners and those who want to develop that land. You've told the people who own that land, your, your value is lower because you can only sell this and get a certain amount of revenue from the sale. So the person who ultimately pays the price isn't the city. Great, they save all this tax money. They can say, great, we've just provided all this affordable housing at somebody else's expense.
Let me clarify my point then, is that because we have seen the private development community support this action in a number of circumstances. What it's saying is, gee, you're zoned at this density, the land is worth $100,000 an acre. The rezone turns that land value to $1 million an acre.
Right.
We are going to say, for some of the units, we'll still be above $100,000 an acre. You won't necessarily go to $1 million. The landowner isn't the one who took the actions, gonna build the infrastructure, et cetera. And so we have seen that when it's done in that manner, where there is a quid pro quo process, that that's what, that's what I am referring to.
Okay, I understand that. And I think you're summarizing the hologram bargain in Seattle.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. And that, that makes sense. But I want to be really sensitive to who's ultimately paying the price here. Because it's easy to say, oh, there's no taxes. We just saved everybody, we provided affordable housing without having to pay any taxes or raise any taxes or pay any subsidies. Somebody pays a price at the end of the day.
It's a trade.
It's a trade, right.
Yeah, and I'm getting at that. And yes, you can balance those things. And that, I think, is a good policy option to explore. But just to say, as I had heard up to that point, we gotta make some of these affordable.
No, I, no, I was only.
Meaning that it's free.
I was pointing out in Juanita that the city changed that zoning, and they didn't use that tool there where they have in other areas of their city.
Density trade-off with affordable set-asides.
And I think I've been consistent, tried to be consistent in that messaging all along. The way you see it written in this strategy plan is as a trade-off to changes in land use capacity.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So another area of concern when we do this is you use the word diversity. You know, making our community receptive to diversity and bring in, you know, affordability is gonna help to foster that in some ways. In all those different brackets, it's not just low income, but affordable through that spectrum. But then you look at, I, I don't think this is gonna happen in Kenmore necessarily, but it could. But you look at different parts of the city of Seattle when they've implemented these rezonings, and whole cultural areas of the city are disappearing. And we're not the only city. So I know that's a different topic, but when you're creating these policies or these strategies for affordable housing, how, how do you look at that? Because this isn't gonna be something that just impacts us this year. It'll, you know, impact into the future.
So in the scenario you're describing, it's when a city has decided they want to change the base zoning because of transit or whatever, that they have to grow, and that's where they, how they want to grow. So usually, the leading part of the conversation is in affordability. It's, hey, you're looking at this change. What do you want when it's, that change is done? And can some of that have some level of affordability? So the affordability is usually not driving that conversation. Now, you're right. That's the scenario that happened in Bellevue, that that natural market condition was getting to a point where redevelopment of existing housing was economically viable for somebody. And that meant somebody was being displaced. And that's a whole nother series of questions. If you're reading Seattle, now the council's getting a little more concerned and sensitive about that. And they're proposing some ideas about that, that I don't, I don't think you see those in this strategy plan at this point, or the ideas. That's a whole, that's a neighborhood stabilization kind of program. And, you know, part of your policy is always something about, is there some strategic preservation? You have manufactured housing. That's the issue in your community. Is there some strategic preservation that should be done? Because that is a unique kind of housing that, that the people who live in that, they see themselves as a very unique type of homeowner. They see themselves as homeowners that often are lower income, and there's been a lot of discussion of, you know, is that a priority here? Who knows what the answer is? Because the market conditions could be, be getting to a point where that form of housing could be threatened. And the question is, do you as a community want to see if there's any, is that okay? Or is that something where there might be some effort to try to do like Bellevue did and step in? We did do that in Redmond once. We helped a group buy a manufactured home community to keep it in nonprofit ownership so that it could stay in its, in its basically historic use instead of being redeveloped. So that was done once.
I had sent out this, these articles. Deborah said, you know, it's a busy time. I'd like you to just summarize it instead of my having to read it. And I would like to summarize, and I'll make it brief. Maybe you don't want me to.
No, I'm sorry, I did that.
No, no, you don't have to apologize because I get it. I mean, I've been there too. But I think it's, I'd, I'd like to do it because I think it's somewhat helpful. I've touched on a couple of those points. But here is my understanding of the key findings of this, of this report from the California Legislative Analyst Office. And you said there's a rebuttal to that, or they revised it or something. I'd be really happy and interested to see that too. So please send it to me. You know, I look at California, and I, here we are, we're talking about affordable housing. We're not inventing the wheel here, okay? The problem is probably the most acute in California, and you could speak to that having lived there. They've got all kinds of different affordable housing programs that have been going on for decades. And I see articles comparing us to California, and most of them are saying some, some version of, they've done a poor job. One reason it's so extremely high down there is a lot of the good intentions, and Mike, you mentioned the phrase unintended consequences a couple of meetings ago. And, you know, like I said, I jump for joy when I hear anybody, any policymaker raise that phrase. I think California housing is a great example of unintended consequences, where people said, you know what? We're gonna do rent control in these 15 cities, or, and I know that's illegal in Washington State, at least for now. And that's not on our table or Kenmore's table. Or we're gonna pay for, we're gonna knock down these buildings, or we're gonna build public housing, and we're gonna fill those up. Or we're gonna do inclusionary housing here. We're gonna radically increase the amount of money we spend on this. And it, it creates a lot of unintended consequences, and I think those are fleshed out in this report. And one of the key points in this report, and it's a counterintuitive finding, was, you mentioned the phrase trickle-down, which applies, which is a political term, not so much an economic one. But I think you were talking about the rebuttal to this, saying, oh, it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So I'd like to see that. But the key point here was, any increase in the supply of housing, that is the root of the affordability problem. And even if it's more expensive than low-income or middle-income people can afford, it does reduce the, what they call displacement of low-income residents because people move out of what are affordable units into the more expensive units, creating a vacancy and more supply at the lower income level. So right away, it has an affordability benefit. The other fact is that new housing depreciates quickly. So yes, 30 years ago, the new housing that they were building is now the affordable housing of today. And 30 years from now, that housing will be much more affordable. So, and the other problem is that a lot of these programs that are intended to pay for a chunk of low-income housing, directly or indirectly, take up or build the limited, from the limited land that's in the area so that there is a degree of mitigated benefit even when you do directly pay for it. In other words, you've got five square miles, not all together, but scattered about a certain city. And if the government comes in and says, well, we're gonna use this for affordable housing, or we're gonna use that, or we're gonna subsidize this, or we're gonna give vouchers there, you've given more buying power. You've either taken land off the table, which makes the remaining land more expensive, or you've given more buying power, which isn't bad by itself. or you've given more buying power, which isn't bad by itself, but it does, it does mean that these people are now competing at a higher level for housing that raises the rents because of the demand going up. So that stuff, I've seen, like, you know, these articles that don't mention this. Most of these articles have no analysis in them. And yet, we're dealing with an issue that is almost purely economic. And I see no quotes from economists in any of this, except for something, some degree of analysis by the California Legislative Analyst Office. So those are the, sort of the principles that I think we should recognize, or at least talk about, as part of our policymaking. Go ahead, Laurie.
So the only thing that I wanted to interject here, and I, I read the articles you sent out, Doug, and, and I think we've all agreed that increasing housing supply leads to probably increased affordability, just for the very reasons that you mentioned. But I, I want to be careful about that argument entirely. Because as a resident of Seattle, what my community is facing is that to increase supply, where are we going? We're going to the single-family neighborhoods. That's what the mayor's proposal is. That's what his committees, one of his committee's proposals is. Because the market, if we have lots of housing, affordability will increase. Well, where are they turning? I mean, there's already multiple multifamily zones in the city of Seattle, and there's not enough, you know, they're running out of room. So now, we're going to approach the single-family zoned areas. And I'm not sure that for this community, that's really where you want to go. And you have a very small percentage of multifamily area compared with other jurisdictions.
I'd like to, I'd let you finish and then I'd like to make some comments to your point. Because I'm not, I think I've been saying consistently all along, market needs to work well. And supply is part of that. But we've always had affordability gaps. And back in 1980, when I was in grad school, I had a business school professor give a whole lecture on why trickle-down doesn't work. And this article in here, the one I was talking about, explains the challenges of the trickle-down. It doesn't mean you use that as a reason to say the market building isn't important. But one of the things I did today because of the article, is I went and looked at rents from five years ago and today. And we get that data based on the age of the housing units. That article would have implied that the housing units built in the 70s and 80s would not go up as fast in rent as the newer product. However, when I did look at the breakdown on a countywide level, and when I did it on some subregional levels, the rents increased over the last four or five years for one bedrooms, went up over 30% for units built in the 70s, 80s, and 90s. And the rents for units built in 2010 went up 20% in that same time period. There's demand issues, there's, one of the article points mentioned that if you're in the right location, I mean, if you take any kind of real estate class, location, 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 location. So if you're near something that's desirable, it doesn't matter what the, you know, you don't necessarily follow all those principles. And I'm not saying that to try to refute what's in that article, because supply is really important. But to say that, when we look at the cost burden data over the last 30 years here, and we see it's only getting worse, not any better, we are building right now, that it's implying that it doesn't, it's not, and what this article is saying, and what I'm referring to, is, yes, that's important. To ignore the market is definitely a mistake. But to think that that, if you just let them build, it will happen? The data, they've tried to do it empirical now, so I'll send the article out so you can, if you want to read the kind of nuts and bolts of it. They're saying, you don't necessarily see, and in fact, the subsidized housing, they say, actually helps just as much, if not more, than building market rate. That it doesn't have the effects that you're saying. So I'm not trying to bolster up saying subsidies is the way to go. But I'm also trying to say, we haven't ever witnessed an error on the West Coast anywhere, where saying the trickle-down works, the evidence doesn't document it, and the history doesn't document it. And even when it has worked relatively well, for low income and very low income, we still have a challenge.
Okay. So you're using this phrase trickle-down, which they don't use in the article. They do say filter-down to some extent.
I'm sorry, the filter-down, that's, but some-
Yeah, but your professor who's talking about trickle-down, was he talking about housing, or was he talking about taxes?
Housing.
And supply-side economics?
No, no, no. It was a real estate class.
Well, I'll tell you, when, then I guess I'll leave trickle-down aside here, but we're, you know, it's easy to say, oh, it's a trickle-down theory, so it doesn't work, look what it's done economically. Yeah, I would challenge trickle-down theory too, which is a political term used to refer to supply-side economics. And I, I don't think it's worked either. And I have a degree in economics, and I think I, I'm not an expert, but I think I have enough to understand it. And housing is different from taxes. Housing is a commodity. Housing is bricks and mortar. Taxes involves incentives to create choices, consumer choices, savings choices, investment choices. So having that choice variable changes the equation dramatically. You can't predict how people make choices and what their particular circumstances are. But I will say, it's persuasive to me, and consistent with my background and economic principles, to say that the bricks and mortar depreciate. The increase in supply creates more choices. It creates more vacancies. It creates some movement in the market. People then making the lower-income units more available. So if you're saying it doesn't work, I'd like to see the arguments for it, but on its face, this is more persuasive than what you're saying.
It doesn't always work because of the demand side of the equation as well.
There's always, if, if demand is increasing, it's only going to be better. It may go up. A price of a rental property may go up, even if there's more supply. But it would have gone up more had there been less supply.
And that, I'm not arguing against that. Alls I'm arguing is to say, what band of affordability will you end up with, with that approach alone? That's the only comment that I'm alluding to. I agree with you on the general overall level, and it's why Arch, as the affordable housing organization, the first thing we did the first five years was try to work with communities to see what they were doing to increase densities in suburbs of Vancouver, to see if you wanted to emulate that practice. Because we understood that needing supply was a big part of the equation. So we've spent our first five years working with cities to say, why don't you think about the things that are now in place? Now, we didn't convince them, I mean, they were looking at it, but we were saying, yes, that's, that's part of an important part of the equation. What we're saying is, this plan is about all the needs in the community. And articles like this sometimes, I think, oversell. And that's why I'd like you to see the other article, how much of the solution just building is, without incentives, without sometimes direct subsidy. And I think the lecture, the way I've described it for 30 years, to cities is, we start with your basic rules, make it work as absolutely good as we can, so that the market can meet almost every need we can. That way, the other tools are needed less and less, or can be more targeted. That has been my MO profile of looking at housing needs in a community for a very, very, very long time. And so I'm just saying, when I see an article like this, is it distorts in my mind, all of my experience in housing, real estate, and all the numbers that we see, it distorts those numbers in ways that make people think it's an easy solution to dealing with the range of needs that we see in our communities.
I think the point of the article was to say, we've seen housing policies that were well-intended over decades have the opposite effect. And the effect of the direct and indirect subsidies is, first of all, highly limited because it's so expensive. And it talks about how many millions of people in California are cost burdened with housing, and how very few of them are benefiting from all these subsidy programs in the state. And so you've got a much bigger problem than the government can pay for. And the vast majority of the solution, and I'm not saying it's entirely, and this article doesn't say it's entirely, will come from the private sector. And so the key is, how do you induce building more units to increase supply? And even at the higher end, it will have, as you like to say trickle-down, but as they like to say filtering effect, and they talk about depreciation, and they talk about mobility in the housing market, and that's what makes the difference, and that's why it's different from tax policy. So I look forward to seeing the article, the rebuttal. I just want a full and open discussion of this, particularly with respect to economic analysis, because it's an economic issue. I will say too, that Laurie, I agree with you, that there, the reaction in single-family neighborhoods is hostile, I brought that up at the last meeting, towards increased density. And I don't know exactly what options we have, but I, I will say this, and I'll get to you, and I apologize for sucking all your air out of the room, Ken. But, yeah, we don't, we don't have a lot of density options here. But it does seem that density is by far the one element of market-based housing proposals that will have the biggest impact. Go ahead, Mike.
Just a comment following up to what you were saying, and particularly what Laurie was saying earlier. I think options is really where we're going to end up here in the final analysis. And in particular, I think we need to be looking very smartly at what, the way we've zoned, and maybe rethinking the way we've zoned some of those multifamily mixed use. When I think back, I lived in New York City during the 70s. So I could tell you an awful lot about rent control and, and huge, huge public housing disasters.
Disasters?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Unintended consequences, very large. But what I was trying to get to is, I think there is an option here, and I think other cities, and I'm thinking of Vancouver, B.C. as a good example, about how they were very smart about how they used zoning in order to increase the economic value of land, and then transferring that value to public use. I think Kenmore is years away from being there. But when we look at some of the, we may come to the point, when we start thinking about a 20-year time span, rethinking some of our density, and particularly some of our height restrictions, and what air rights might be worth in some of those areas 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and thinking about how we might capture those for public benefit, for things like affordable housing, that don't increase, that you don't destroy the tax base in the process of doing that. But you appropriate some of that increased economic value from the developer to, to the community. So I think maybe that's something where we may end up when we get here. Because I, I think we're all agreeing, we don't want to undermine or destroy our single-family neighborhoods. So that's going to force us to think about how do we increase density, which could also be through height limits, in a limited areas.
Thanks.
There may need to be more of them, but I think that's probably where the compromise we're going to-
Thanks for that. Mike, I just want to say, that was the discussion I wanted to have. The big-picture discussion about what has worked in the past. We're not inventing the wheel here. Let's learn from that. Let's take your experience in New York. I know people who've lived in New York. I've lived in DC. I suspect others have lived in high-density areas too, and seen how, what may or may not have worked in the past. Maybe we can get, before we plunge into the details, a sense of where, how we perceive the, the better and not-so-good options here. Mike, go ahead. You were very patient.
Yeah, thanks. I think the conversation around direct subsidies and the filter-down approach of increasing supply is really interesting. And I think on a macroeconomic level, it's, it, it will have an impact on what we do. But when you get into that free-market economy kind of a conversation, that's going to probably apply more regionally than within our city boundaries. That's not, people that make those kind of housing decisions are not going to recognize Kenmore city limits as they make their housing choices. As the vacancies become available, people are going to be making more open choices between Lake Forest Park and Shoreline and Kenmore. So if we have a list of vision statements and city priorities, as we start to rely on open-market influences, I, I think we start to lose some of those control elements, just because I think the welcome to Kenmore sign is going to mean less and less as those free-market influences take hold.
Go ahead. I don't, I don't want to step on you. But I, what I think is that we're looking at builders here, not just buyers and renters. Because the key to supply is inducing the builders to come here. And they are making those choices. They look at the boundaries and they look at, and I've talked to builders, I don't represent them in my practice, because I'm a one-man shop, and they go to the big firms, and I probably wouldn't represent most of them anyway. But they go, what does Shoreline require? How long does it take to get a permit in Shoreline? What are the land use regulations in Shoreline? What are the environmental requirements I got to satisfy in Shoreline? And compare that to Seattle, and compare that to Lake Forest Park and Kirkland and Kenmore. And so those boundaries matter for those reasons. But you're right, I don't think buyers and renters do, but the builders do. And I think that's the key to trying to creating supply here. Go ahead, please.
But I think it does go back to these strategic areas overlaid with what we already have in our city ordinances and the vision of the city. You know, our city council is working with other entities that are trying to solve the transportation problem, you know, move the Lake Point project forward. And these things that we want to put in place that are merely recommendations are going to be recommendations. They're not laws. So we, how can we, as a team, move this conversation forward as we prep for our next meeting? What, what would you think city staff and Arthur from Arch think we need to do so that when we come back, we can really roll up our sleeves? We'll probably, knowing us, we'll probably have some little rabbit trails, but we want to get the work done. So give us your three top priorities of what we can do to be ready.
So I think what, from my perspective, it's what I said about 15 minutes ago. Some point, draw a line and go with the strategies. Because you're talking concepts. My understanding, our job isn't to rezone your town here. It's, as you put it, Commissioner Baker, it's to work with the fabric that's out there, and seeing how you layer on top, or put in policy. I think the way it's worded in the strategy plan, so when we go through the strategies, it might get at some of the points you're making. It says, if you consider increasing development capacity, look at linking to public benefits such as affordable housing. Now, if you think that that will always, then, do you make that a high priority? Because if that ever comes up, you want to make sure it's on the table. You're not dictating any circumstance other than an approach. So in my mind, it's going back and looking at these strategies and blending the comments you've had so far with some of the strategies to see if it starts helping you to see how the strategies play into this conversation.
So it's 8:47. I wonder if we want to plunge in. Are we ready for details? It looks like, you know, I've got stuff off my chest, thanks for your patience, and some others have too. Maybe we've gotten as far as we can go based on the big picture, and maybe it's time to get into the details. And then if so, the question is, do we start tonight, or we just set it over for the next meeting, given the time? Colleagues?
Oh, and I think we're, I don't know how far we're going to get. I think we want to spend quite a bit of time on, on these.
I get the vibe. All right. All right. So that would satisfy that element of the agenda for tonight.
Yeah.
We'll just wrap it up. Is there anything anybody else wants to bring up, in the way of new business or comments?
I think what we'll try and do for next week, because what I've heard is, a lot of the conversations is, can you help us summarize what the supply and demand is in, in Kenmore? So that when we're looking through these strategies, we have some sort of data to assess them. So all the discussion I've heard tonight was on some level about data, figuring out what the supply and demand is. So how we increase supply, so what supply do we have? What the demand is? What is the current demand? So that if you understand that, you can then, as you're going through this, kind of take a look at those strategies and ask then specific questions about which specific strategies, how would they either affect supply or affect demand? I, I don't know how else to get to, to move this. It seems like you are unwilling to take that leap into reviewing this without that information. And I don't think there's a right, I don't think there's a right answer on what will address affordable housing. And I think probably, from what I've heard from the discussion, it sounds like you're a little reluctant to have that, to have that discussion. But the, the outcome isn't, we're not asking you to resolve the issue, or to identify one particular strategy that would resolve it. Well, the outcome would be sort of a broad range of things that may touch on addressing some supply or demand issues for affordable housing.
Yeah, I, that sounds fine to me. The other thing that came to mind is we sort of, as we talked tonight and we looked at this list, is something I brought up, and I think, Arthur, you had said you would look into and present, is what are the opposing arguments with each policy proposal? And it doesn't mean it hasn't happened, because we haven't gotten into details. But by way, by way of example, Laurie's saying, you know, density in single-family neighborhoods was proposed in Seattle, and there was a very adverse reaction to it. proposed in Seattle, and there was a very adverse reaction to it. We're talking about ADUs here, and you're saying, Arthur, oh, they're well-received in Mercer Island, and they may be, but I was reading recently that there's, you know, and Seattle is a way of trying to increase density, I think, in single-family neighborhoods, is saying, let's liberalize a lot of ADU laws and allow for backyard cottages and more, you know, non-owner-occupied ADUs, which are essentially duplexes. And there's some resistance to that. Apparently, there's an appeal going on. Queen Anne Neighborhood Association is challenging some of those proposals. So I want to know, clearly, in Seattle, they're having some resistance to that. We're in Kenmore, we're in the suburbs, and they're probably even more invested in the sense of single-family neighborhoods and less density. So I want to, I want to know what we know, and you can tell us from other cities.
And that's an example of an area where it's a building issue. It's not new. You have the regulations. Your mayors and councils told us five years ago, get more of them done. We want more. So we have, so far, it's been managed in a way that has worked. I think that the conversation you hear in Seattle takes it to a different kind of level, one that we haven't done, and not necessarily one, when you look at how we laid out, that didn't necessarily go into that area. It's worked within the framework that the cities have been doing it in the past. And then mostly, it's over the owner-occupancy issue, and how much building can you do? Whereas all the cities over here address both of those issues.
But my point, that was an example.
Right.
But the broader point is-
But there's a pros and cons.
Please, yeah.
Right. And I think when we said that, I agree with you. I think part of that is, through the conversations around strategies, you'll list some of the pros and, I mean, we want, again, I think as we said in last meeting, we're trying to help you have the conversation and give you what you need. You have a lot of the pros and cons in your head. You don't need to hear them from me. You know what they are.
Well-
And this is your document, so we're trying to help facilitate you raising those issues, and we will note them. We will bring out others, as we know of them. We're more than happy to do that.
Yeah, but, but you've been through this. We haven't. In other words, Carol and Mike and some others have brought up, what about the, and, and on this end, single-family neighborhoods, and that's in our vision statement, and how's it going to be received? You've been through this with cities that have wrestled with these policies, right? That's what I'm saying.
Right.
When I talked to this city, they, this is what the reaction was.
Right. And what I'm saying is, more times than not, the reaction is from the public, and you guys know the public really well, because you are the public. Everybody at this table is a housing expert. I just have it more categorized in my head. So-
All right.
That's what I mean, is that you naturally will raise a lot of the issues, I think. We'll help supplement, more than happy to.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Mark, please.
I just had a process question. So we come up with this, you know, prioritizing strategy, sort of a work plan, it goes to the council, they'll do what they're due, they'll do what they'll do. Will this come back to us in some form to, you know, flesh out strategies, or does that depend on what the council, I'm just trying to get an idea of, we do this, it seems fairly truncated. Does it come back to us? Should we be thinking about, you know, that as we're going through this process?
I guess that the short answer is, it depends. Because as you know, the, the role of the planning commission is to specifically address topics that have a comprehensive plan element to them. So if there are things that are consistent with the comprehensive plan, as you know, there is an option, it could stay with the council, or the council could then turn it back to you. So I guess it depends. I'm sure that there will be some part of your work program that could be devoted to creating some regulations to help implement this, the housing strategy.
Right. So I think, the way I, right, along those lines, is you have a strategy to increase, you know, in the end, you have eight high priorities. What then becomes a challenge for cities is, how do we build that into our overall city work program? And those first three columns you see here, where we check off, is to decode update, other council action, or coordinate with others. So the ones that are coordinating with others might just, okay, we're going to sit in on the regional meetings and make sure we're having a voice at that table, and try to have that shape us. You do that immediately. The ones that are land use-related, so you decide you want to revisit the public benefits that go with rezones, then, and if that's a high priority, then the council will say, okay, commission, we want, you have four things to do this year, this is one of them. And you will revisit that one in great detail. If it's one like, expand the multifamily tax exemption program, that's another council action, they'll take that on. So once you have the whole framework, where you piece in will depend on which column it's in, and what the council asks for, and how they build it into their overall work program.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there any new business? There being none, I hereby adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.